Morning, we'll call to order the meeting of Story County Board of Supervisors. Today is March 22. Please stand with me if you're able and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Lisa Supervisor Headens on Zoom this morning. Morning Lisa.
Good morning.
I will entertain a motion to adopt today's agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin Headens.
Aye.
Aye, now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you would like to make public comment, please step forward to the table or you can raise your hand on Zoom or use the star nine. Oh gosh, star nine. Okay, no one will close public comment number one. Next, we have consideration of proclamation recognizing March 20 through 26, 2022 as National Agriculture Week. Supervisor Headens, would you like to start?
Sure. Whereas we recognize the unique and irreplaceable value that farmers, ranchers, foresters, farmworkers, and other agricultural stewards have contributed to our nation's past and present. America's agriculture sector safeguards our nation's lands through sustainable management, ensures the health and safety of animals, plants, and people, provides a safe and abundant food supply, and facilitates opportunities for prosperity and economic development in rural America. Whereas the American farmer, a national symbol of strength and strong moral fiber, has displayed ingenuity in times of prosperity and perseverance in the face of hardships, was supplying our state, nation, and the world year in and year out with an abundance of high-quality agricultural goods and products. And.
Whereas we recognize Iowa's leadership role in agriculture and the culture of innovation and entrepreneurship that drives the agriculture industry in rural communities and farm families around the state. And whereas we acknowledge the leadership of Iowa farm families in adopting new technologies and management practices to reduce food, fuel, and other products more efficiently and sustainably than ever before. And.
Whereas Iowa's agriculture industry includes global leaders in all sectors who have continued to grow and persevere during an incredibly challenging year. Advanced manufacturing, agricultural processing, animal health, plant sciences, predictive agriculture, renewable fuels, and many more. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, to hereby proclaim March 20 to 26, 2022 as National Agriculture Week and encourage all citizens of Story County to celebrate farmers and agriculturalists in your families and communities.
I move approval of the proclamation recognizing National Agriculture Week.
Seconded Headens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you. No agency reports. Consideration of minutes. Move approval of minutes 315-22.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
So I. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Moved and seconded Headens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Next, we have consent agenda. Approval of consent agenda. I was just presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
No public hearing items today. Additional items, we have discussion and consideration to begin negotiations on purchase of property for temporary disaster debris staging and processing site.
Good morning.
Good morning Amelia.
So this is a work program item that we, I think, have been trying to get done since 2015. So I'm really excited to be here. So we, as a county, do not have a landfill and we have our construction demolition waste. So if there's, you know, a house that gets torn down or, you know, a house that's impacted by a disaster, go to Boone County's landfill. So in the event of a large-scale disaster, their landfill capacity is pretty limited. And in the interest of speeding up recovery, we need a site where folks could temporarily bring different types of debris to get it off their properties. We could sort it, we could send, you know, CND to Boone. We could, you know, find, maybe work with Metro Waste Authority for household hazardous wastes. We could chip and burn vegetative debris and recycle debris as well. So this is a temporary site in the case of a natural disaster, basically for staging, sorting, and processing debris. We initially tried to lease a site. So we sent out a letter to landowners that met certain citing requirements. I think because of the potential for household hazardous wastes, no one was interested. We also tried to work with commercial property owners in the county. You know, Martin Marietta, Iowa State. But because of the potential for long-term impacts and the productivity of land or the need to continue their commercial operations if there is a disaster, that didn't work well either. We worked with Nevada and Maxwell that had debris sites to try to enter into a 2080 to share theirs. I think there's some issues with floodplain and other concerns with distance from dwellings with those. If we were to burn debris, we need to be a quarter mile from a dwelling. And so having something inside the city really didn't meet that requirement. And the DNR, of course, says, well, in the event of a disaster, we waive certain regulations, but it's still.
Capacity too.
Yeah.
If there's a large-scale disaster.
Yeah. So we had done some calculations on the size of the debris site we needed back in 2016. We looked at if one of our unincorporated villages or manufactured home communities or some of the subdivisions or the Ames were impacted by a tornado, what amount of debris would that look like? And we got about 12 acres needed if, for instance, the Bella Woods and other subdivisions along Cameron Road were impacted. Then the derecho happened and the entire county was impacted. And we used 10 acres at this site that we're going to be talking about today to just have vegetative debris. And that was, it worked really well. But that was 10 acres of vegetative debris. And so I think the need for a 20-acre site, which, could you put up that PowerPoint? Would definitely accommodate us. And the other thing that's nice about this site is it has a loop road. And so by negotiating for the full 20 acres, we're able to have one-direction traffic on the site, which helps with safety and circulation.
So he had the, we used the 10 acres.
Yes, the 10.
Did we fill up that 10 acres of debris?
Pretty much. We had, so what we ended up doing was we had a public debris pile and a county debris pile so that we could do our FEMA reimbursement requests separately. That works pretty well.
And there has to be room for vehicles to be around.
They had to have room for the chipper to come in. They say if you do a debris estimate based on, you know, the number of homes, the size, you should add 60% to the land area needed for circulation to that. So, you know, 12 acres, 15 acres would be pretty good for a more localized disaster. But I think with the derecho, it became apparent that we might not be seeing that many localized disasters, you know.
So Amelia, this is, Amelia, this is Lisa. You said this would be more of a temporary. So are you envisioning us using this kind of year-round or only if we have a big disaster?
Only if we have a big disaster. But that said, we need to think about other uses in the interim. So for instance, the tenant farmer on the site has cattle just across the street. Could we put hay on the site? And, you know, he could have the hay for his animals. You know, I think Darren's brought up the need to have a more northern location for, you know, keeping gravel for road projects. Or, you know, they have a burn site, but maybe they could use this one as needed during the year. Talked to Joby about potential options. I know Latifah's talking about a composting site, but I wouldn't want debris here from a disaster. Yeah, it's not a permanent dump location. It's not a yard waste facility for the public year-round. That would just be during a disaster.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so the property owners of this previously leased site, you know, have, we've been communicating off and on since 2020. And I think they are interested in selling at this point. And so I'm here for direction to start negotiations with them, which would include me, the board chair, and the assessor, and Ethan, working with them on a price, you know, contingencies such as an RFP and make sure we have an appropriate site plan that shows us what kind of site preparations we need to make to make sure we're safely handling debris. So do we need trailers for household hazardous debris sit in? Do we need tarps? Should we put up a berm to protect, you know, adjacent farm fields if we're going to burn debris on the site? Those kinds of questions. So that's what I'm hoping for today is just some direction to start those talk spaces for the north 20 acres of this site. Let's see. The, so I think in terms of budgeting with the RFP, first, we need to figure out, we need to come to some sort of agreement with the property owners, contingencies, and then we'll come back with the RFP. And then we could have consideration of the unbudgeted funds for an RFP if we get to the point of an agreement with the property owners. So that's why I'm not making like an unbudgeted funds request today.
Right, right.
I can answer any other questions about the site or why it's a good site?
I'm familiar with the site.
Okay.
Because I was out there several times after the duration. I thought it worked really well. And I think it's the advantage that it did have still with gravel there, you know, still. Because and probably get more if we needed to. I think, I think it's a good site. It's pretty far north.
Yeah.
I, I might think, and particularly if we're talking about composting, and I was impressed by whatever the state is. You know, I wouldn't feel like having a second site in Story County as well and we'd be having more specialization. I think there's a whole lot of, you know, other things that we could do with the site in terms of accomplishing recycling kind of site. I mean, that's, it's kind of long range and thinking about how would we manage something like that. But, you know, I'm convinced after the duration, when I was even before that, because I was on the work plan for planning the development and we talked about it, I was just convinced that if we had a disaster, we needed someplace to get stuff. Particularly with all the development we have out there. We could have, we could have huge need. So I honestly see 20 acres and kind of more central part of the county is a good start.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Great.
And just as we're talking about it, I'm thinking, it doesn't make sense to put something as prominent as a composting operation. Someplace where we could potentially need that whole 20 acres.
Yeah.
What does that look like? What else, what other uses? Can we move out of the way if we do need to use all of that?
Yeah.
So, so would we be, you're saying that farmers cattle, let me tell you that. Would we rent the land back?
That's what I was thinking. I haven't talked to them about that.
Maybe have, with some condition, maybe a condition that if we need it, we need it now.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
Yeah.
Where we could get income off of it either through rain or through CRP.
Yeah.
In the meantime.
Yep. But, you know, one thing I wanted to point out on this map is the eastern 10 acres wouldn't be good for burning because it's within a quarter mile of the town. We could probably cite other types of debris on that edge or do some. Yeah. And then in terms of looking at other sites in the county, you know, we've probably got about five responses back from different property owners after we sent the letter saying, hey, your property might meet our requirements. Most were not interested in selling the properties that we would be able to use. Most had other properties that were in the floodplain, for instance. We did have one on Highway 30 that looked pretty interesting. But I think without the frontage road being built yet, I would, Darren raised some concerns about, you know, how's traffic going to get to the site off Highway 30? Are we going to accidentally drop a bunch of vegetative debris on the highway? That would be bad.
Yeah.
When we burn, is it going to cause smoke across the highway? We had one off of 35 we were looking at too, that I talked to the Nevada Fire Chief about. And he had similar concerns.
Smoke goes across the road.
Yeah. Exactly. So I think that this is a good site for, I know it's in the north-central part of the county, but as we get closer to major roads, population centers, this becomes less appropriate.
Well, and this may be the better beginning place for us to start at. And then as things progress and we see the level of need and what else we want to expand to and the time commitment of staff, you know, what's needed, then we could look at another location. And maybe the one you're referring to might be, you know, available and things may be better in place for us to take a better look at that.
That brings a question up to me and I'll make an assumption and you tell me if you're. I would assume that, I mean, we don't just get the land. We get the land and then we have a plan.
Yeah, that's part of the RFP that I'm gonna.
I always understanding what the RFP was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so we're gonna, my, my thought is we'll start negotiations, we'll come to an agreement, and part of the agreement will be, we need to make a plan to make sure the site is workable for a variety of debris sites. And once we have that plan, we will purchase property. And I did talk to the property owners about that. I think they want to make sure it's appropriate for multiple debris types too because they live. Sure. And they farm the rest of the land.
Right, it's important to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, that is correct assumption.
Thank you, and Mark Mountmouth, Emergency Management.
Yeah, and I.
Work on it.
Yes, and I, you know, we have made and worked, you know, I think Keith in Emergency Management has taken a debris site design course. I've been looking at this for a number of years. So there's some examples you can find from FEMA. But what I really want to make sure is getting, you know, somebody with more experience, like consultant, so that we can look at the topography of the site.
Yes.
And drainage patterns and think about those things too. So yes, that would be part of this.
So you're looking for direction to move forward on negotiating with the landlord and during the RFP for the consultant?
Just negotiating.
Just to go.
Consideration. Consideration.
Have the conversations.
Yeah, yeah. And then once we have those conversations, if they, if we come to a point of agreement, we'll come back about the RFP and the plan.
And the RFP Amelia, that's for the consultant, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm getting a little delay on the Zoom, so I'm sometimes not catching everything.
Yeah, no, that would be for a consultant to come up with a plan if we can reach an agreement.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that you, all of the different variables that you are constantly considering. I just wanted to say that.
Thanks.
This discussion and considerations of the proclamation.
Yeah.
I would move to direct, planning development director to begin negotiations on purchase of property for temporary disaster debris staging and processing site.
I'll second.
I just clarify that that includes myself, the Board of Supervisors Chair as your representative.
Certainly.
And Ethan. Great, thank you.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Thank you. Thanks. More to come and step closer.
Yeah.
Next, we have consideration of appointments to the Mid-Iowa Development Fund. Great to join me.
Hi.
Great.
I pulled Greg up because he's, pardon me, he's the one that brought this to the county's attention. Actually, when I received Greg's email, that was the first time I was made aware that this, this group evenness existed, the Mid-Iowa Development Fund. The action before the board today is to appoint two individuals to serve on that on behalf of Story County. As I said, Greg notified county staff that the current designated appointee from Story County, who's Brenda Dryer, needs to be replaced. And we actually don't have any historical documentation of that appointment. So this will be the first, to the best of my knowledge, formal action by the board to appoint someone. Just in some of the research that Greg provided to me, which I outlined in the memo, I won't go through all that. There is no formal term. They're appointed by supervisors to the, to serve on this board without a, you know, a term of two years or whatever. So I've been doing some research. For example, Polk County and Dallas County, both annually in their appointments to the organizational meeting at this, this is one of the groups to appoint to. So I think going forward, that would be what we would propose to the board supervisors. So this would be likely through the end of the 2022 and then in 2023 of the organizational meeting at the appointment.
Because I like to keep track of those things. Would you work with Jordan to get that on our appointments list then? So we do that in January?
Shelley too. Yeah.
And Leanne, I'd like to, at some point, have Greg or maybe Dylan or Michelle come before the board and just give us a little update on it as well. I have no problem, you know, it's something that we're kind of finding out and that we need to appoint people. I just would like to know a little bit more on what they're doing on, on our behalf.
I think that's, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, that's a great point Lisa. And it was going to be covered in my quarterly report coming up here in March.
Okay.
There's examples coming in Nevada, in downtown Main Street in Ames, and there's two pending possible applications in rural Story County that I can get an update on as well.
That'd be great, thank you.
So as I said, I really, you know, this has been in existence since after the 1993 floods. And I was, I have a vague recollection of it, but I could not find, nor could Greg, we couldn't find any formal action by the, any board. So today is that formal action to appoint Michelle Fullerton, who is with in Nevada, and then Dylan Klein, who's with the Ames Chamber and the EDC. Are there any questions?
Where's the funding council? Sounded by EDA.
Yes. So the funding initially came from, after the floods of 93, when the presidential declarations came through and there was all that emergency money for business expansion and replacement from the floods. And then after that, it was an ongoing project started through the federal and state, through EDA, of starting low-interest forgivable loans for startups, minority-owned businesses, things like that. So like with the recent CARES Act, a whole bunch of money flew into the system. However, it's another presidential declaration triggers those waves of cash, if you will. So when another derecho comes through or if there's another flood of 93 type event or things like that, God forbid, those, those, that funding comes through this organization and then it's divvied out through local business programs like this. And it's not to replace private funding lenders. It's just simply to supplement them. Because in this type of situation, a lot of these business owners, small business owners, they don't have the capital or the resources to go to the private sector alone. So this is just the final thing to help them get back to operations so they have income and business thriving again.
So this organization only funds when there's a disaster or it, there are funds available all the time? It's just that this is one of the avenues that funds come?
That one.
Okay.
Um, there's always, this organization always offers 2% and 4% loans, forgivable and different, different segments. They're not final capital, they're just a portion of the funding. But when there's a presidential declaration, whether it's a big event, natural disaster, and there's a wave of funding, it's channeled through this organization, to the private sector as well. So CARES, there's currently $17,000 remaining of the CARES funding that they've received. If, there's currently $17,000 remaining of the CARES funding they received. Brenda's been the point person to the Ames Chamber EDC on that and getting it out for small business. The example I can give you right now is the, the one in Nevada that I'm going to be updating the supervisors on is a business restaurant option. So it's part of their Main Street program. So they're coupling Main Street along with this as a funding option to open a new restaurant option in Nevada. Did I answer your question? I'm getting them.
You're going to do a presentation.
I'm going to do a presentation on it. Just to be perfectly clear, there's never been an ask from the local supervisors for this organization. It's simply because of the region involving Story County, which is why representation is required. And having two representatives on there, including Michelle and Dylan, is, is huge because with the private banking experience and the local business experience Dylan brings, it's going to give a good representation of all of Story County versus just, I won't say Ames-centric.
I, I don't know Dylan, but I know Michelle very well. I've known her for over 20 years and she's fantastic.
Yes, she is.
Everything she, everything she does, she gives it 110%.
So excited to get her back to Nevada too.
Yes, yes.
We're in the beta half.
She wasn't on for very long.
No. Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion that we appoint Michelle Fullerton and Dylan Klein to the Mid-Iowa Development Fund.
Moved and seconded Headens.
Aye.
Good. Aye. Basil. Aye. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you and thank you for Leanne for having the patience as we were digging through archives and trying to find information.
I know you were met with a lot of what?
What? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to departmental reports. We've got Conservation's quarterly report and it looks like we have Mike Hatt on Zoom.
Good morning, Mike. Good morning. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah. You want in?
Very good. Well, I want to give you a report. I guess, I think it was maybe December, the last time that, that I was here with a report. So although we, a lot of our projects, some of the things that I talked about in December, we had contracted for perhaps some of our construction work, park improvement projects, and, and many of those had to, had to be halted for the winter. And so we're, we're picking up on some of those here this spring. So I think spring's coming. And so anyway, that's, that's, it's encouraging to have progress pick back up on some of these. First one I want to mention is McFarland Park Lake renovation design. This one, we've been, haven't been real active on that. We've been waiting for our Army Corps of Engineers permitting. We just received the permitting on that this last week. And so we're, we're excited to now continue that process and move forward with that design. We should get that design wrapped up and then our goal would be to, assuming that the, the funding for that is passed, then we'd be able to move forward with that year with bids this summer. Maybe even this spring for bids. Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, again, another project that we had contracted for last fall that, that put on hold through the winter is some wayfinding sign installation that's picking back up now. We also received grants for our next paving project. And so this would be paving again, we're, we're going from the east, excuse me, from the west side of the county working across the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail to the east. So we had left our paving stops right now at the Skunk River Bridge at Cambridge. And so we've been awarded funding then to take that to the next step. And so we'll be paving from the, the bridge there in Cambridge to. So we'll be paving from the, the bridge there in Cambridge to Sixtenth Avenue. So that is awarded and the grants have been awarded and now we have a design contract on that project. Some riverbank stabilization projects that, that I think you may be familiar with, one that we completed at, on the Skunk River, just south of Peterson and partially on Peterson Park. And then we're also, I'm getting quotes as we speak for next project, and that would be a stabilization project at Anderson Access, which is one fiftieth avenue. So we're moving forward with that. We did receive some, another state grant to do a water trail improvement project at Sopers Mill. We will be, we were already awarded, we rewarded a prior grant through the Water Trails Program to do some preliminary engineering. So we completed that and then submitted for the construction grant and we have received that. So that's nice to know. We'll move forward with finishing the engineering and then we'll move out to bid on that project. Dakens Lake Primitive Campground, something that we had begun last year or last fall that took a winter hiatus. And now we're back at that project as well. Water quality. Various things on water quality. One, I think you know that Sarah's been doing a, a yeoman's job on, on the Edge of Field project. So she's moving forward with that. She did put in an application for some additional funds for that and that was, was not received. So we weren't able to grab those additional funds. So I think that we had ARPA money available for that and had been budgeted for, for that project for this summer. And so we'll move forward with using that ARPA money for the Edge of Field project. Water quality monitoring. Boy, we've been doing, I think we've had four or five training sessions so far this spring for volunteers to do that. And it's just been overwhelming response. In fact, we've got many people on the waiting list. I think it's in the neighborhood of twenty people on the waiting list that, that want to be involved in water quality monitoring. So we have got all of our HUC twelve watersheds in the study. So we really don't have a lot of extra opportunities for folks. But we're, we're keeping them in the, in the loop, in the, in the event that we do need additional people. One other water quality project that we've chatted about in the past, and I think we'll be seeing that come back up here relatively soon. And that is the Wetland Development Project at what we refer to as Dotson or Prairie Valley Development there on County Line, on the Boone Story County Line Road, just south of one seventieth. We've been working with Pheasants Forever, the city of, not Pheasants Forever, excuse me, Ducks Unlimited, the city of Ames and Idols on this project. So I don't, or excuse me, Ducks Unlimited has, has the development or the design contract. They have a design and engineering phase of their, or unit of their organization. And so they're doing the preliminary design on this. We've got about fifty percent design level right now. So that design is currently being reviewed by folks at Idols. And as well, our district, Drainage District Engineer has reviewed that as well to see if there's any implications or any thoughts that he has moving forward. So I anticipate that we'll get a drain, ask for a Drainage District Trustees Meeting coming up in the not-too-distant future to discuss that conceptual plan.
Mike, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
What, what does fifty percent design level mean?
That means he's halfway through design.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You know, a hundred percent would be it's, it, the design is, is complete, fully complete, accurate, ready to go to bid. Fifty percent is we're still working through some details on design.
Okay, thank you.
All right, as far as environmental education goes, you know, we're, boy, we're, we're back at it in the schools. All of our naturalists are back fully engaged in the schools now. We've got summer camp registrations that are scheduled to come online in a couple of weeks here in April. So we expect that we'll have full summer camp offerings. I will say that we, we planned our summer camp program, if you will, our offerings, back when we still were operating with some COVID restrictions. And so there's things that we have, we're not, we're not doing any overnights this, this summer. Something that we hadn't been doing through COVID. So we're still not doing that this summer. We're not doing any extended travel with, with children. So those kinds of things that we're, we're not in the program offering for the summer. But still, we have a full plate with, with our programs and camps. There's two, also two kind of continuing, continuing education courses that we're co-sponsoring. One is Iowa Master Naturalist Certification. And we're co-sponsoring that. It started last Saturday, I think was the first Saturday, and it goes every Saturday for twelve weeks. So it's nice to be able to offer that. It's a full course and so it's nice to, nice to have that here in, in central Iowa, specifically here in Story County. We're also co-sponsoring again with the Master Conservationist Program. And this is something we've co-sponsored with the ISU Extension Office for, I think, two years or two different times now, maybe three. And that course is full as well. So I think we, we know that people are asking for these kinds of continuing education and, and little deeper learning opportunities. As far as our natural resources go, we received another grant to do floristic inventory, i.e. plant inventories at, at our prairie remnants in Pioneer Cemeteries. So there aren't a lot of those in the county, but there are a few of those Pioneer Cemeteries that have remnant prairie populations on them. And so we did receive a grant to, to move forward with a plant inventory on those. Another thing that we just, that we just began is a new project that the, the state DNR approached us on. And that is for us to raise some prairie plants. So we would do some specific, if you will, some, some garden plots. We'll do this at Hickory Grove Park, right behind the office, where the resources are easy to get to. And we'll raise two or three species of, of very conservative value. So i.e. rare plant species that will be then planted throughout, throughout central Iowa. Could be planted by, DNR could be planted by other county conservation programs. In exchange for that, then we will get seed back from other cooperating state and county nurseries. So this is a project that several counties are, are involved with. And so it's a great opportunity for us to raise a couple of species and then get quite a few different seed sources back that we can use in our prairie restorations. Yeah. And one other thing, I don't have it listed here, but just late last week, we received the, the final report from the Sensitive Areas Inventory. So kudos to Dr. Tom Rossberg and Dr. Bill Norris, who'd been working on this, I believe, since seventeen to, to get this completed. So a couple of highlights, I just want to look at my notes here as I was reviewing this before we started. Before I started the Zoom, I'm just going to share a couple of highlights with you. This area. Okay, a couple of, is an interesting findings. Number one, they, the two of them, so Bill and Tom surveyed just about twelve thousand acres in the county. They surveyed about half, well, excuse me, that we, they were given permission by about half of the landowners that they approached. And so that resulted in about twelve thousand acres. And in that inventory, they identified forty-three plant species that are new to Iowa, that have not been identified in Iowa. They identified twenty-four plant species that are known to be in Iowa, but were not known in Story County. So they had some incredible results on this. And it'll be a little while before we fully digest their report. I think it's just shy of six hundred pages. So that will take us a little bit of time to get through that. But they have some incredible data in there and that's, that is nice to have. So our goal with that again is to help us, help us to work with private landowners that might have some of these sensitive areas on their, on their land. And to give them, help to give them some resources needed for protection, enhancement of those areas. If there's areas here identified on public lands, then to, you know, give us more opportunities to, or identify those opportunities, maybe to further protect or enhance those areas. So tremendous study. We're glad we have it. We'll work with planning and development and, and others as it comes to taking next steps with this project. Couple other last items. You know, we've been going through some staff realignment. Thank you to the board for approving that. We've got all of the field positions filled. Well, all but one field position filled. We do have conditional offers extended on that one remaining field position. We also have a conditional offer extended on our outreach position. So it's nice to be able to, when we get those filled, then we'll be back at full staff. So that's nice. Couple legislative notes. I've got two notes here in, in the report. The first one was a bill that, that would have restricted private landowners' ability to sell their property to either the State Department of Natural Resources or to any county conservation board. That bill did not survive the second funnel. So that one is no longer alive. The second bill here is a bill that's in the Senate right now that would fund the Natural Resources and Outdoor Recreation Trust Fund. So that, that is still, still alive in the Senate. I believe they're having a Senate Committee Hearing tomorrow morning on that bill. Or as well, some point tomorrow, I'm not sure what time of day that is. But we're having a hearing on that tomorrow. So again, the trust fund, I think we've talked about this, you're familiar with the, the Natural Resource Trust Fund. But Iowa voters said that they wanted it in two thousand and ten and it hasn't been funded since. So it would be nice to get this funded. Always encourage our legislators to move forward with supporting of this bill.
There's still to use local option sales tax to scoop the local option sales tax.
Linda, can you repeat that question?
The strategy in this bill still to use the local option sales tax to scoop that to the state level.
It does touch, it does touch the local option sales tax. I cannot, I, I do have a fiscal note on it here and I'd be happy to share that with you. I haven't gone through it well yet. So I can't answer that question very well, Linda. I think the intent was to, the intent, I believe, was to provide that money or provide lost money. Still make sure that counties and municipalities were whole with that lost income. But I think it is touched by this bill. To what extent, I'm not sure.
Backfill strategy like we've seen fail for the counties before. That's my point. Backfills that we're going to stay and be forever and ever. That's my concern about this. I think it's very, I think funding I will is very important. But I think it needs to be a straightforward funding of I will, not a backdoor funding.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to, and, and again, I don't, I don't understand that bill very well yet. So I don't want to give you any kind of impression, a negative impression on its implication with lost or overly positive one. I, I just don't understand that yet. So, but like I said, I'd be happy to share the, the fiscal note that was provided on the bill.
I can, you know, we can provide that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, this is Lisa. So the subcommittee meeting is tomorrow morning at eight thirty. And I didn't see a fiscal note attached. So if you could send that out, I'd like to look at it.
Yeah, you bet. Yep. Okay, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Army Corps of Engineers land, the federal government's supposed to be returning to us and we've been working on this a couple of decades. Do you have an update on that?
Sure. As of, of Friday, no, yesterday, I got an answer back from an earlier inquiry I had put into their project manager. She's trying to track down a question that, that answered to a question that I had asked and hasn't been able to track it down yet. In short, the, we're, we have been waiting on one more coordination item between the Army Corps of Engineers and the State Historic Preservation Office. I'm not sure what that was, but we had one more coordination item. I asked her for a status on that a few weeks ago and, I haven't, I haven't got an answer back on it yet, but I did get communication back. But just saying that she's still trying to track down that, that answer. So once that coordination item is done, my understanding is that this is ready to move forward for signature up the, of the chain at the Army Corps. In the meantime, obviously, this isn't going to happen this year. And so in an earlier conversation with their project, the, the core project manager, I asked about extending farm leases for this year. So the Corps has gone ahead and extended all of their leases on this property to the existing tenants. So all of that property will be farmed this year.
Those are just one-year leases?
What was that?
Those are just one-year leases?
Well, I think they were longer-term leases that have expired and so they're on a year-to-year extension basis.
Talked about the edge field practices that our watershed coordinators are working on. Do you have a number on locations of the ones that have been finalized?
Why don't I send that to you? We do have it. I don't have it right here in front of me though. So I'll go ahead and send that to you. I think the only ones that there is some question about now are some buffer installations, saturated buffer installations that would, that are a long, open drainage ditch. And so there's some discussion between Kent and, and folks. In fact, I think there's a meeting, you guys have a meeting coming up and that will be discussed at that point. Those are the only ones in question, I think. The others are, are all squared away. Sarah's been doing landowner meetings with, with the folks and getting signatures on, on their authorization. So I think we're, we're ready to go. I can give you that data. It'll just be noted with a caveat on that one parcel in regard to the open ditch.
I think that would be great. And I don't necessarily think we need a formal report. I think that would be great and I don't necessarily think we need a formal report at the next headwaters WMA meeting, but maybe Sarah could be ready to maybe give a five minute because I think we're getting to the point we want to get people excited about, you know, with that study, excited about the things that we're doing now. And if she could just be ready to just give a, just a brief report on the progress she's made, I think that would be good.
Sure.
The inventory on Pioneer Cemeteries, is that going to be Dr. Rossberg?
Yes, I believe it will be him.
Real interested in seeing the Sensitive Areas Inventory also, but I'm not sure about 600 pages. Is there an executive summary or a chart? Or is that just?
There, there is executive summary. That's what I flipped to first this morning. And I think I'd be happy to, to share that. We want to make sure we understand it and get any questions answered here soon. So yeah, I'd be happy to share that.
That's fascinating. Forty-three species new to Iowa and 24 that aren't in story, that not found in story before.
Right.
Amazing.
Several other species that are considered imperiled. And imperiled means they're either on the endangered threatened, endangered species or threatened species list, significant concern list. And so there were several of those identified as well. So yeah, it's a, it's a wealth of knowledge and will be, this is one of those momentous, if you will, studies that's really going to, I think, help us to better protect our environment here in the county. So wonderful to have this, but it's going to take us a little bit of time to digest it.
Okay, that's, I think that's all I had. Thank you for the information. This is a lot of exciting things going on.
Good, thank you, everyone.
Lisa, did you have any questions? I don't. Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your time.
And I'll get that fiscal note sent out too.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have other reports. We've got discussion and direction on draft capital improvements plan and review of public comment. Good morning.
Good morning again. This is the stage in the process where I come before the board to report on the public input that we received on the draft capital improvements plan and then inform you of the next steps and any changes you may want in the draft plan. Actually, we did get public feedback this go-around. One comment, but you know, incremental process of progress. I'm just going to share it. It says that there was just one comment that was noted and it's, I love using the Heart of Iowa Trail and hope that the continued paving all the way to Collins continues sooner than later. It is a great connection to the state trail system and an asset to our county. In addition, a trail that spurs off towards Nevada to the north would be ideal as well. And as you know, the Heart of Iowa Trail is in the draft CIP and Mike did provide an update on where that is.
I think the last time I got a comment was coming on the trail as well.
Yeah, yep.
So we know they're out there, we know their support, paving the trails and getting it there. Fire it other times too.
I was pleased that someone did take the time to go in and submit the form and very appreciative of that individual for doing that. The draft plan will be presented next week for final action, following the budget action that you have. If there are any additional changes that you'd like me to make between now and then, I can. Otherwise, it will look as, it will, it will contain the items that were presented earlier through the public review process and today. Are there any questions?
No, I think it looks fine, Leanne, and I'm glad that we did get a public comment.
Yeah, I think it looks good. I know it was a lot of work getting all the summaries of each project.
And it will look, the draft, the final one will look a little bit different than what's on today's agenda. This was the public comment format. I'm going to have a little bit more details for fiscal years rather than just that table.
Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any upcoming agenda items?
I do not.
Now it's time for public comment. Number two, comments to the public on items not on today's agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If you would like to make public comment, feel free to step forward to the table or you can raise your hand on Zoom or you star nine if you're on the phone. Being known, we'll close public comment number two and move on to liaison assignments. Committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Merkin, you want to go first?
Yeah, I've got several meetings. This week, most of the A.A. Insera MPO meeting is six o'clock tonight. I will be off tomorrow, be traveling Thursday. There's a meeting on the Sheriff's Office Command Staff of the Conservation Center. About presentations, I think. Spreads security issues. Friday morning, our broadband group has a meeting with our broadband providers, our telcos here. Monday, I'm going to just make an announcement though. Next Monday, 28th, 7 p.m., Sarah Carmack, our watershed coordinator is going to be at Insera Library and making a presentation. That's what I got for the week.
Sure, I have several Zoom meetings. I have a workforce development meeting today. Tomorrow, I have a FERTA ATC meeting, transportation, accessibility, transportation coalition meeting. On the 24th, Thursday, I have a regular FERTA board meeting and a CICS meeting. And at the moment, Friday, the 25th, does not have a meeting on it, but I'm sure between now and then, that will probably change.
Great. Yeah, so tomorrow, Wednesday, we have the statewide tornado drill at 10 o'clock that all county buildings will be participating in, just a reminder of that up here. And then Thursday, I have the Sheriff's Office Command Staff Retreat in the afternoon. And then Thursday evening, I'm attending an AMIS Project Iowa event. Friday, I have, Friday morning, I have Central Iowa General Detention Center and I, I think I'm going to drive out there in person, so I won't be here in the morning, but plan to be here in the afternoon. I don't have anything during the day on Monday, but then Monday evening, I have a City of Ames Climate Action Plan Supplemental Input Committee meeting in the evening. Like there was something else also that kind of overlapped. It. Anything else?
Is that subcommittee meeting on Senate 3157? Are they assuming that?
I didn't, I didn't see that it was, Linda. It looked like it was in room G. Was it 15 or G17? And I didn't see a Zoom link to that.
That's at 8:30?
Yes.
I don't think I can make that. Thanks.
Yeah. I'm just double checking real quick, but I did not see it. If I see it, I'll send you the information.
Thank you. It's, it's possible, I'm on the road, it's possible I could go through New York on my way where I'm going.
Okay, well, if there isn't anything additional, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Moved and seconded, heads.
Aye.
And I, Basil, I, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.